I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here, thank you. At this time, we have oral comments from the public. Does anyone wish to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Kathryn Culver. I'm a trustee for the Fortuna Cemetery District. And I would, I know that most of you know that we own and operate seven cemeteries here in Heinzville. And we are three employees, two full-time, one part-time. And we have a board of five trustees that oversee the operations of the district. We've had two trustees relocate to another state, and we have a trustee who's ending a term at the end of January. So I am here to ask council members to identify constituents who may be good candidates to serve as a trustee of the Fortuna Cemetery District. Now, we are doing well financially, and as a volunteer job, it's not difficult because we only have one meeting every other month for about an hour. And we oversee what's going on with the district business-wise and talk to, you know, have employee comments, that sort of thing. So if anyone is interested, I would like to encourage them to take a look at our website. It's Fortunacemetarydistrict.com, or you can just Google us. And our agendas and our meeting minutes are posted there. And as I said, we have three openings now. And actually, it's our supervisor, Michelle Bushnell, who appoints you to the term. And unfortunately, although it's not paid, as I say, it's very interesting and good to know what's going on if you have family or friends that are buried in these places. So, but you're thinking gaps on, we are looking for a few good people, and it's really a worthwhile thing. We've got a lot of history buried in these seven cemeteries. It's pretty cool, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming tonight. Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom, Siana?
I don't think that mic is turned on.
[laughter]
Nobody heard me test earlier?
I saw your [inaudible].
I'm also having a problem with the [inaudible].
Okay.
Turn the volume up. Test, test?
Test, there you go. Now, no one wants to talk, so.
What you saying? I think it hurt me.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have five items tonight, including minutes from November 21st, the report of disbursements, an authorization for the city manager to continue teleconference public meetings for city council and all city committees, commissions, and boards, approve a supplemental budget request to purchase insight and onboard subscriptions from NeoGov, and authorize city manager to execute a three-year agreement not to exceed $28,887.80, and a supplemental budget request for building-forward library grant. Does anyone wish to pull anything? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve items A through E on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, city council business. Approve a supplemental budget request and authorize the chief of police to purchase an unmanned aerial vehicle utilizing funds from the National Opioid Settlement, Resolution 2022-35. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor Long, Honorable City Council. I have a small presentation I'm gonna put up here. Back one, I think.
It's on our screen, but it's not on the main screen.
Just back a slide. There we go. So essentially, we're trying to do two things tonight with this proposal. The first, staff is recommending that council authorize through a resolution specifically explicit permission for the procurement of a new unmanned aerial vehicle system, or UAV, as I'll refer to it through the rest of the presentation. UAV or drone are both acceptable vernaculars. Secondly, the staff is recommending that council approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $7,000 to purchase the UAV. So we can go to the next slide. After some consultation with the city attorney, a resolution to procure this equipment would be in keeping with best practices and demonstrates the judicial prudence necessary for compliance with California Assembly Bill 481, the Government Code, Section 7070, and our own Fortuna Municipal Code, Section 2.10.150, regarding military equipment procurement and inventory. As the council may recall from the city council's earlier adoption of our military equipment ordinance this year, UAVs are listed and defined in category number one and classified as military equipment. Currently, the Fortuna PD has one UAV in its inventory. This invento, or this UAV, excuse me, was procured in 2018 using donations from Hobbs and Humboldt. It was about a $1,500 purchase and was classified more as kind of a hobby drone, non-specific to law enforcement missions. Next slide, please. So, as I was kind of segueing into, the current UAV is technologically obsolete. It was purchased by the previous police administration with hopes of implementing a complete UAV program. That earlier project did not come to fruition for unknown reasons. The purchase for the new UAV can be made utilizing a portion of the first payment from the National Opioid Settlement Fund, and because the settlement payment is not currently part of the approved fiscal year budget, there is no net fiscal financial impact. Next slide. So in addition, and after further consultation with the city attorney, the use of these funds is recommended and authorized for the procurement of this equipment. Next slide. Just a little bit of a general background, the police department addresses all uses for UAVs and Department Policy Number 613. Unmanned aerial systems, or UAVs, may be utilized to enhance the department's mission of protecting lives and property when other means and resources are not available or are less effective. All uses of UAVs are in strict accordance with constitutional and privacy rights and federal aviation administration regulations. That concludes my staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for chief?
I just have one really quick. I know several people have had to get pilot's license to do this. Is this something that's also gonna have to have a budgeted, a budget for training?
So it's an excellent question, Councilmember Stanfield. We do have an opportunity with some local training that's coming up in our region that's gonna be facilitated by the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office. And so whenever we have an opportunity to kind of take advantage of that local training, we're able to save with travel and accommodations. And so we're looking forward and have made plans to attend that training, but absolutely certification and training is a part of what's required to, to lawfully, you know, deploy these drones or UAVs.
Any other questions from council? Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2022-35, and read by title only, and approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $7,000 for procurement of a new UAV equipment program implementation and training.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, Siana.
Resolution 2022-35, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna approving the acquisition of military equipment, making findings pursuant to the military equipment policy. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, all right, thank you. Moving on to our next item, we have authorization to award a construction contract for the Rona Park Basketball Court Project, CIP Number 9106, to Mercer Frasier Company and establish a maximum contract amount of $250,000. Staff report, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I too have a PowerPoint, which I'm gonna work to get up here pretty quickly here, hopefully. And we launch. Excellent. Okay, well, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to talk about this project specifically, which is the Rona Park Basketball Court Improvement Project, and specifically, staff's recommendation to award a construction contract to Mercer Frasier Company. So a little bit of summary on the project and kind of a background is how it came to be. This is actually Measure E recommendation that came out of public comment, Measure E process. So early in 2021, there was some public comment as we were kind of putting forward some projects and some funding ideas for improvements to the basketball courts at Rona Park. As many folks probably know, we only have a single court there right now. You know, it's located kind of right next to the roadway. A lot of that space, you know, surrounding the Jasons, shared uses for whether soccer, baseball, other events that happen, you know, during summertime in that area. So I think there was real need and desire from the community to have maybe, you know, to expand the use of the basketball courts at, at Rona Park, in addition to kind of provide more amenity and to make it more usable by people who just wanted to go play basketball and not have conflicts with other uses in the park. So with that, the Measure E Committee recommended funding for that project, and that has actually been added to over two successive years of Measure E now. And with funding available and kind of with a direction in mind, staff hired a landscape architect to start working on what that project would be, what components would be included in it, how big would it be, and what would it look like? And that design process culminated ultimately in around the late summer of this year, when we finalized project design, which at this point includes installing two fully new basketball courts with new commercial-grade Bison-type basketball hoops, fiberglass backboards, breakaway rims, a little bit more of a modern arrangement, you know, and also with the center post that's further away outside the court. So it's also, you know, in addition to being more modern and very durable, it's also safer, you know, kind of keeps conflicts with kids and the steel posts at a minimum. So in addition to the two new courts, we are looking at also doing full exterior acrylic striping and surfacing, so kind of that more modern, heavy-duty striping that's also very non, you know, it's slip-resistant, it's, you know, it's made for this type of like long-term outdoor use. And then, in addition to the basketball courts, we also wanted to provide some additional amenity out there. So we're looking at expanding the area to include a little bit of a patio with some, you know, vegetated planters that would act as a buffer between the existing road that goes around the park and the basketball courts themselves. Right now, you know, you'll go there and there's a lot of people that are sitting out in the grass, or there's a table just randomly out in the grass. We'd really like to be able to provide a space for people to, you know, congregate and watch people play or spend a little bit of time, make it more of a gathering space in addition to, you know, being a basketball court. And then lastly, two items that we have included in the project, which have been included as bid alternates, are full perimeter fencing, you know, so one of the things that we'd really like to try and do is make sure that this can be a dedicated use as basketball courts. There's a lot of other things that happen in the park, and we'd kind of like to keep basketball in and everybody else in their own spaces, and this would certainly help achieve that. And then lastly, a hydration station, you know, kind of like the modern bottle filler or water fountain. We have examples actually in the park over at the, at the baseball field right now or over by the existing bathrooms. So here is a, is a picture, just to provide a little bit of context, where we ultimately converged upon as a project. So this is an example, but ironically, it's actually very close to the type of system we're looking at doing here. Two courts side by side that, you know, provides some enough buffer in between the fence and the courts and in between the courts themselves, so it'd be, you know, comfortable to have multiple games going. You could have walkways kind of around all sides, not unlike tennis courts at the high school, if anybody has been into those facilities before. These are the, the same style or similar to them, I should say, if the basketball hoops would be looking at. I believe we're looking at ones that have clear fiberglass backboards, small difference, I suppose, and then the acrylic striping and then the, you know, the fencing on the outside, again, to keep basketball users in and then other users out. So moving over into kind of our bidding procurement timeline, we did complete design for this project in late summer, and we bid it for the first time in September. And unfortunately, when we opened bids in early October, we found that the low bid was about 20% over our established budget for the project. And that also didn't include a construction contingency, so realistically, we were probably about 30% underfunded to award the low bid in that particular case. So with that, staff, we elected to reject all bids in this case and to make some modifications to the project in order to really deliver a lot of the same, if not the same amenity that we're going for, but hopefully at a lower cost. So we went back with the landscape architect and made some modifications that include some minor reductions in dimensions, pretty small, all things considered. We made some small updates to the patio area and reduced a little bit of the planters, and then we eliminated a number of items from the contract, picnic tables, trashcans, things that we, you know, as a city could reasonably add at a later point in time and at a lower cost. So with those modifications in place, we rebid the project in October. And in mid-November, we opened bids for a second time, and we got four bidders this time, and we have a low bidder that was identified at the time as Mercer Frasier Company with a base bid of about $180,000. So the base bid would include the basketball courts, the planters, the patio. As I mentioned, we did do two bid alternates. Bid alternate one is shown here is the fencing, bid alternate two is the hydration station. So staff is recommending at this time that we move forward without the hydration station, as we'll discuss here in a minute in the fiscal section. That piece would be a little bit outside of our established budget, and we feel that that's something that, you know, we have a couple of facilities within 100 feet or so nearby that could be used for that, and we could reasonably add it later on the, you know, at the staff level, using our crews. So here with the fiscal impact, we are requesting a total project budget and a contract not to exceed amount with Mercer Frasier in the total of $250,000 to complete the project. This would include $125,000 of project-specific Measure E funding, which has been allocated in two successive years of Measure E, in addition to up to another $125,000 from the city's general parks acquisition and improvements fund, which is also a Measure E-funded item. The second fund here is kind of a pot of money that has been created in the last few years through Measure E with the intent of being able to be flexible throughout the year on project spending for parks specifically, as a means to, you know, supplement funding in areas that may find themselves a little bit underfunded or to be opportunistic about certain things, you know, improvements in the park that the city and the community wants to see. So with a not-to-exceed amount of $250,000, staff would be able to immediately award the base bid of the contract and also look to award additive alternate one, which is the fencing. But we may go back to the drawing board a little bit on that and see if there's some minor tweaks we could make to that to maybe bring it a little bit down further into the area we'd like to see with the budget. With a $250,000 budget, even with bid alternate one and the base bid, that would also allow for about a 10% construction contingency, so that could cover any unforeseen costs that, you know, rise during constructions, things that weren't appropriately captured in the plans, things of that nature. Of course, the target is always to spend zero of your 10%, but it's nice to have it if you need it. So with that, I just want to end here with, again, the recommended action, which is that the council authorize the city manager to award a construction contract for the Rona Park Basketball Court Project to Mercer Frasier and establish a maximum contract amount of $250,000. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and I just want to also note that although I'm presenting it here tonight, I have worked very closely with our parks director and our city manager to move this project forward, so we have a good team here and we're excited to continue moving forward and actually see something on the ground. So, thank you very much, and.
Any questions for Brendan?
Yeah, just looking ahead to, looking ahead to large special events, and you anticipate the alignment on that road staying the same as it is now, and the Loop Road?
We anticipate the alignment of the road staying the same. We'd kind of like to go to the edge where I suppose the sideline of the existing court is, and that's where we'd put a few, probably four, five-foot-wide vegetated planters. They'd have curbs, which would provide a buffer in between, I guess I should get closer to the microphone, provide a buffer in between, you know, the roadway and then, you know, people that may be sitting on the patio and then the users. So realistically, if you take the existing court and the way it's sitting, if you could imagine we rotate it 90 degrees, so it's projecting into the field a little bit more, and then we put two of them side by side. We did look to make sure, you know, the, I guess, the field, you know, the outer-field dimension of the Little League field that's across the way, you know, that would still have enough room to function for its uses as well, so.
And how far do you think it's gonna project in from, say, from the, the edge line now that you were talking about?
Yeah.
How far in to the?
I'd say it's roughly a doubling, so, you know, the two courts side by side kind of makes a square. So if you, you know, went another probably 60 feet in from the edge of the existing asphalt, that's probably where the new court would be.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about this. I think it'll be a definite asset to our park. I do have a question for you, Cameron. If, if somebody wanted to have like basketball tournaments, could they reserve these?
Yeah, that's something that we actually haven't considered yet, although I think it's something that we should consider, because I could see, you know, yeah, some members of the public or organizations wanting to utilize that nice new space for something like an outdoor tournament, so I'd certainly be open to it. So I think that's something that we should discuss. These should be completed by spring of 2023, so that's around when we're doing our budget talks and talking about fee schedules, so perhaps we discuss a fee schedule to add the appropriate court use fees for that. I mean, I like to keep things open to the public as much as possible, but we've got lots of facilities, ball fields that you can rent, so I see no reason why we wouldn't be able to rent out basketball courts as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it seems like it would, if there're gonna be patio and picnic tables, it'd be a good birthday party rental, you know, kids can play ball and come and have their cake and be fun. All right, any other questions? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item?
Matt Everhart, I just want to say thank you to the Measure E Committee, the city staff, everybody for put the work in on this, and really appreciate it.
Lieutenant Everhart brought the idea, the concept to the Measure E Committee initially, and so I think it was a scaled-back version, really just wanted to see some separation from the road, and so we've taken it above it and beyond with this project, I think, you know, really trying to just make a facility that's gonna stand the test of time and really serve the needs of the park for a long period of time. We don't want to have to go back in there, so we're hoping this is a really nice facility that we won't have to change for a long time in the future, just like our current court has lasted for a long time.
Thanks for bringing it forward, Matt. It's gonna be great. All right, anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to award the Rona Park Basketball Court Project, CPI 9106, to Mercer Frasier Company and establish a maximum contract amount of $250,000.
Thanks for bringing it forward, Matt. It's gonna be great. All right, anyone else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to award the Rona Park Basketball Court Project, CPI 9106, to Mercer Frasier Company and establish a maximum contract amount of $250,000.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to city manager's report. Merritt?
Thank you, Mayor Long. So just a few items, as is customary, I'll review the upcoming meeting schedule. So the next meeting will be a special council workshop on December 13th at 3:00 to discuss council committee assignments, mayor, mayor pro tem assignments. That'll be here at City Hall, December 13th, 3:00. Our next council meeting will be on December 19th, and we expect at that meeting to have the transition from the current council to the new council and welcome our new council members, Conley and Mobley, to the council. So that'll be a nice meeting on December 19th. Our next planning commission meeting will be on December 13th at 6:00 PM. Our next Measure E Committee meeting will be on December 20th. At that Measure E Committee meeting, our finance director will be giving an update from our staff on how the money's been spent and how the projects are going. Our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting date is on December 7th, this Wednesday at 2:30, and that's gonna be a pretty interesting meeting. At that meeting, staff will be presenting, along with the financial consultants and the planning consultant, some of the preliminary financial analysis and an update on what's happening with the pool funding effort. So we'll have a glimpse at what some of the costs are and the two alternatives that the Rona Rec District is looking at, as well as discussing the strategy for public outreach moving forward. So that should be a very interesting meeting on December 7th at 2:30 here at City Council Chambers. Just a few other items to report, I have been meeting with the prospective owner of the Fortuna Mill Side. I helped to arrange some meetings with California Department Official Wildlife and PGE, so they've been in town reviewing the site, and they're getting close to the end of their due diligence period, so just really helping them to answer questions and discuss the city-specific planned project and put them in touch with representatives from other agencies. I'm also pleased to announce that we hired Morgan Dodson as a new, for the new F-Bid coordinator position. Her first day was today, we onboarded her, and so we'll be taking time over the next couple of weeks really to get her out and introduce her to folks, but she'll, I, I fully expect she'll bring a lot of energy to the position. She's very excited about many of the aspects, so I can't wait to, to get her started and getting her out there in the, in the community. And as a reminder, we did get one other application from a business owner in Strong's Creek Plaza area, core area, but we were still looking for volunteers for the F-Bid Advisory Board. So if anybody's interested, we're gonna be leaning hard. We want to see a representative from downtown core area, we want to see a representative from Redwood Village, and we'd love to have a, an at-wide candidate for that position too. So once we get a few more applications in, we'll be looking at those applications and bringing them back to the council for recommendations of nominations to the board, particularly if we get a quorum. So I'll continue to report back on that item as we make progress. One of the other things that I wanted to report is that, I don't know if the council's aware, but we've had connectivity issues. We have a number of our off-site facilities, the River Lodge, the Park Office, our General Services Building at the Treatment Plant, that are connected via wireless bridge to the city and the server. And so one of the things we've done, working with our city clerk IT and our Nylex, our IT consultant, we've, we've been working with AT&amp;T at no cost, they're setting up fiber optic service to those facilities, so we should have more reliable connections. It'll make the phones more reliable, the computer connections more reliable. We had some issues during rodeo, so that should solve a lot of the problems by having a direct data link to City Hall and all the city servers. Couple of other things, the police facility is still out to bid. You may have seen that in the last Public Works Director's Report, but Brendan's been doing a great job. We've gotten a number of questions in on the bid, so we continue to get questions, and Brendan is working with our design consultants to sort out the RFI. So the bid's been extended a couple of times. It originally was supposed to be due December 1st, and I think currently it's December 15th is the, is the proposed bid opening, so provided that we can, you know, we, we answer all the questions, we can move that, we'll be able to move that project forward, open bids, and hopefully award it towards the end of the year, beginning of next year. And then, I think that, I think that covers it.
All right, thanks, Merritt. Any future agenda items that we don't have on our radar at this time?
No.
Nothing? All right, city council reports, Mike Johnson.
Well, there was no HCOG meeting in November, and I was out of town for that month, pretty much all of, all of it, except for the election.
Balls!
And, so now, looking ahead, I've got a North Deal meeting with Caltrans on Wednesday, as well as an executive committee meeting with HCOG this Wednesday. And the following Thursday, the 15th, we have the HCOG board meeting. I was reappointed to my Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Policy Committee, so we'll be working on that possibly first part of January. And that's all I have to report at this time.
All right, thanks, Mike. Jeremy?
Well, I haven't met with any of my responsibilities since the last time we visited, so I am excited about the, the park, getting the new basketball court. That's really cool. And I guess that's all I got.
Okay. Tammy?
I have a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting coming up Wednesday, and I just got back from Monterey. I went to a meeting down there for the League of California Cities, and that's, we were talking about all of the different committees and what they're gonna be working on this next year. There's some interesting things coming up. There is some bills coming up that could definitely hurt the cities. We'll know if they qualify within the next week, and then if they do, I will inform our new council on it, because there's some stuff we have to do to fight some of these. It's pretty interesting to listen to all the, the stuff and how everything works down there. They were saying that, that every senator or the ones that bring the bills forward always bring a few throwaway bills, because they, you know, they have to look like they're bringing a lot. So it's interesting to kind of see the behind-the-scenes, how bills are brought and, and how they qualify and which ones have to have signatures and which ones don't, and what the league chooses to work on. So that was a pretty interesting meeting, except the elevators broke the last day and I had to walk down four stairs, or four flight of stairs, the emergency exit, and my legs were really sore the next day. That's all I have to report.
All right, thanks. Reduct meeting, we had-
So it's interesting to kind of see the behind the scenes, how bills are brought and how they qualify, and which ones have to have signatures and which ones don't, and what the league chooses to work on. So that was a pretty interesting meeting, except the elevators broke the last day, and I had to walk down four stairs, or four flight of stairs, the emergency exit, and my legs were really sore the next day. That's all I have to report.
All right, thanks. Redec meeting, we had an executive meeting last week, and we will have another one this next week, and then I think they're having one the following week, but I will no longer be the redec person, so we'll have to see who needs to go to that after we have our meeting on the 13th or the 19th, which will make it all official. Don't forget, the lighted parade is this Friday night. The city's working on a float, like always, but there's not very many of us, so the city needs to step it up. We could use some help. And then Holiday Dazzle is coming up. Get your homes registered, get your decorations out, and let's make our town look really festive, and you can win prizes. So that's all I have for tonight as well. So, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
The Al Gray, the Al Gray Lighted Parade is the same, or, excuse me, the Downtown Merchants Open House is the same night as the Lighted Parade.
Yes, the route, the parade route ends downtown, and so then you can go to all the stores and do some local shopping.
And the prizes for the Holiday Dazzle are rather decent this year.
We still need some more donations in order to make that happen, but we're well on our way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of fun stuff coming up in the month of December.
And going back a couple of minutes, I second the motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks for coming, you guys.